Okay, with that, I'll call the council session to order for Monday, June 9th, 2025, and ask the clerk to certify the meeting notice.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204.
Clerk, call roll, please.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Here.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Here.
Great, if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible) to the fire, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item D, changes to the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda as it's written.
I would second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The motion carries. Special business action items, we'll go to G1. This is our new urban renewal agency district. Who's, Ryan, who's, Denny.
(inaudible).
Yeah, no, need to have you come up so we can get you on the mic. Denny Houston, our Urban Renewal Agency Chairperson, so thank you for your service to our community, Denny, and.
Thank you for your appointment.
If you would.
It was supposed to be only like a meeting every two months, with attorneys and lawyers and consultants.
Yeah, well, welcome to the world of volunteerism, at any rate.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, as the mayor said, I'm Denny Houston, I'm the chairman of the Garden City Urban Renewal Agency. And a little background, I think you're all familiar, we were asked by developers of a proposed new development on the east side of Glenwood at Marigold, to look at developing a new urban renewal district. And so we have begun that process, and we engaged Cuslin and Associates to go through the eligibility and the feasibility study of creating that new district. We also have engaged Ilum Burke as our legal counsel to guide us through this process. On the city's request, we have expanded the district to include the south side of Chindon from Glenwood down to Curtis Street. And all of that area meets the eligibility requirement of the new district formation. And so Cuslin will present that to you this afternoon. We met with the Ada County Commissioners two weeks ago, and they approved the resolution to approve the formation of the district because part of the district is an Ada County property. So that step has been taken, and we come before you tonight to ask for your approval to move forward with the formation of the new district. And with that, I'll turn it over to Phil to make his presentation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mayor, council members. Again, my name is Phil Cuslin, principal of Cuslin and Associates. We've been retained by the Urban Renewal Agency to go through the process of establishing a new district. And again, the, the mayor's been through this a couple times, and I think the rest of the council, probably this is maybe new territory for you, so maybe I'll take just a couple of minutes to talk a little bit about where we are in this process. Again, the first step that we go through is kind of trying to define the area that we'll look at to determine whether or not it's eligible for urban renewal activities. And that was quite a process in this one, because not only do we have the issues that the city is concerned about and the Urban Renewal Agency, this one is a little different because we're bringing in unincorporated Ada County property. And in doing that, it's specifically provided in state law that you can include property outside the city limits, but you only can do that with the approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the city, the agency, and county. And so our effort initially was to try to get our arms around what the county's interest was in terms of geographic footprint of this, because they've never been through this either, and then to work with the agency and the city to kind of understand what their focus is in the balance of the area. One of the statutory requirements is that the entire area within urban renewal districts in their totality cannot exceed more than 10% of the entire valuation of the city. So that was kind of a, a bit of a moving target in terms of if we add this parcel, then we go a little over, and what do we do if we move it back? And so there was quite a bit of work in terms of getting that just right. And you've seen in the document that was provided to you, we're right there. And so what that did, and we'll get into it in a little more detail, is basically it consumes all of your urban renewal capacity for the near term. And so we talked to the mayor, you sure you want to do this? And he expressed his interest, and that was certainly brought to fore by the other board members for the agency, that this particular area is of sufficient priority for this particular toolkit to be brought to bear, that they were willing to basically, you know, put it all in on this particular project. You can, over time, the total valuation of the city's going to grow, and so you can add more later, but at this point, that basically consumes your entire process. So we're kind of at the first step in this. The eligibility report is before you, we basically have to look at the, what's going on on the ground and compare that to the statutory elements that are, will define eligibility. We've done that, we've seen our analysis of that. The board has approved it, then it's went to the Ada County Board of Commissioners, they approved it, because again, we have to bring another group of elected officials along in this. And then it's now before you to exercise your discretion, to see if you agree with our findings and you'd like to go to the next step. If you do that, the next step is to conduct a, an urban renewal plan, which is to go through and develop a plan of work that basically responds to the issues that we've identified in the eligibility report. So we do that, and part of that effort is to do an required financial feasibility analysis to make sure that this thing stands up over time. So we'll be back to you if you decide to proceed with those documents. We're in the process of relocating our residents and going through stuff, and we found this. I don't know if you've seen this or not, but it was, it says Garden City invites industry, home builders, small business, and recreation. This goes back to, I think, about 1950, 1949, there's a picture of a 1950 Ford police car in here, so.
Yeah.
It was in the early days, and we've come a long ways, but maybe not so far.
That, that car actually had a radio in it, too, it was state-of-the-art.
Absolutely. So anyway, let me move through this presentation quickly and get to your questions. We first heard a little bit about the background, we've talked about where we're going in terms of geography, we included the footprint of the stadium, basically there's a name to Backstretch Boulevard or something, we didn't know that, but that road that doesn't exist is actually got a name. So that's the southern boundary of that area in the unincorporated county, we included the footprint of the ballpark, the RV park, and the other county holdings going up to the river. And then we basically do a, kind of a annexation of the right of way going down south on Glenwood, we include the county park down at the, at Chindon, Lady Bird Park, and the county agreed to that, because in 20 years, who knows, they might want to do something with that. And then we got the direction, go as far down the south side of Chindon as you can and stay within. So we had to shave off some stuff up here, and we were able to actually go clear to the southern city limits. And we included all that way, the entire right of way of Chindon. So there's work to be done, that is included in the district, because the, to do, expand funds that's generated in the district, it has to be in the district to spend it, so that's, that's where we are. Let's see. Here's the, the boundary of it, kind of long and skinny, but I think.
Yeah, we're going to be referring, because the screen isn't working, we're going to be referring to your packet, yeah.
Okay, what I have put up here is a map.
Yeah, page 23.
Of the area that, it basically depicts what I just described, and the, the area includes, you know, Fred Meyer clear down to the, to the connector, so. And the southern, southwestern boundary is the, is the canal that is included in the, in the district. And I think we initially left that out, but we were requested by the agency board to include that in case at some point there is a potential for a recreational facility to use that right of way, so we did include that as well. In making that modification, we had to create a couple of little islands, because these were relatively high-value properties in the district, and so I think there are three of them that we had to take out to stay under that 10%. So you've got a couple of map there that shows, in red when you get to it, some properties that are deleted when we get back doing the legal boundary, that those will not be included in the district. In the chart where we have this, the eligibility criteria summary, there are 13 criteria in the statutes, and we had to look at each one of them. And in doing so, we looked at each of the 350 parcels that are included in the district in terms of what's there, its value, its age, its density of development, and so forth, and that was all included in the document that you were provided. We assumed you didn't want us to read it to you this evening, so we'll assume that you've consumed that. And we found that of the 13 criteria, only two of them were not met in this district. So clearly, the area is eligible in our opinion, and the county agreed with that, as did the Urban Renewal Board, and so you are allowed to pass a resolution and proceed if you so choose. Again, I mentioned the statutory 10% limitation earlier, your total city's valuation is about 2.7 billion, so we've consumed 274 million of that in the, between this district and the River East District that already exists, and so that eats up 9.84%. It's kind of getting right in there. But everybody in looking at that felt comfortable, that was sufficiently below the threshold, and they were willing to commit that level of assessed value into the district, because it was kind of an opportunity that is here that they wanted to pursue. So anyway, that's my brief presentation. Happy to answer any questions that you have about where we've been, where we're going, and so forth, so it's important that you're comfortable with this process and this piece of puzzle, because this is kind of the threshold document to either move forward or not, and you're at the controlling position to either do that or pass on.
Great, thanks, Phil. Can you remind me, the base valuation, do you pick a, you, you use the value when you start the process, knowing that that might evolve over time? How does that work?
Yeah, you take, we knew what the, the value, the base value of the River East District was when it was established, so that's a fixed number.
Okay.
And so what we've done is then basically made a spreadsheet of all the 350 parcels and the taxable value of those, and added those up to demonstrate what the current 2024 AV is, because that's the latest certified assessed value, because the 2025 values aren't certified until November. So we have to go with the latest number that is certified, so that's the 2024 value. And so that, as is the 2.7, we'll get, and so that number is the value that is defined as the base value for the new urban renewal district. You add that to the 51 million in the existing district to come up with your calculation for the 10%. Now, over time, that base value will remain pretty much fixed. The, any increase in value goes to the incremental value, that is the calculation where the revenue comes from, that the Urban Renewal Agency uses to fund its programs.
Great, I, I, that's what makes this work, because if the base value in the River Front East were changing because of the work that's been done there, then there wouldn't be any increment.
So, yeah.
It works pretty good.
Over time.
I just think that's always interesting, then, how that works.
Yeah, and when the dis, that district closes out, that incremental value goes back to the benefit of the taxing entity, so.
Yeah.
We've, we've called that the urban renewal dividend.
Yes.
And so, basically, you're investing time in this process, stepping back from taking current revenue, and the theory is that the activities of the district stimulates taxable investment that wouldn't otherwise occur. And so basically, we're giving up current revenue for a benefit down, down the road that helps not only stimulate redevelopment, but also in the long term provides greater revenue to the taxing entities.
Great. Any questions, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just some comments, so thank you very much, I have the honor of sitting on, on the URA Commission as well, and so I just, some things to note is that eligibility criteria, I think there's 13 of them, and you only have to meet.
One.
One to be eligible to set up a URA, and we, we check, you know, 11 of the 13 boxes for that area, you know, in terms of development. And then I, we've also had Director Schmidt involved in all our meetings of, as we've come up, or what part of the city needs the most infrastructure help, and it's, it's really that corridor on the south side of Chindon Boulevard, and so to get the development that we'd like, that we saw with the water district, you know, on the riverside, we, we won't be able to do it unless we have this, this URA, so I think the fact that we squeak in under 10% is a really good thing. It's a really good thing that we actually got the Ada County Commissioners to sign off on it as well, the development, potentially the expo down the road with the baseball stadium is, is going to be a really good thing for our city. So I appreciate, Denny, your leadership and, and your work to make sure that we actually do qualify for this, and we can get it in, and then I think maybe just on the timeframe, our goal is to get this kind of sealed by the end of the year, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And I might just add that the vote of the Commissioners of Ada County was unanimous.
Good.
It's a really good deal.
Yeah.
If I may, Your Honor, I think, good point is, we've structured this, because it's this partnership between the city, the Urban Renewal Agency, and the county. So we structured it so if for some reason the county decides they don't want to participate, it's not going to kill the district. We can basically pull the ripcord, take their piece of it out, because it's primarily virtually all tax exempt property, so it's not going to really affect the numbers any. So while we're interested in working diligently with the county to ensure that their goals are met, if for some reason they don't want to play in any current timeframe, you're not basically going to take the whole district down with it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, just, I think you said this, but I just wanted to make sure, I think you said that Glenwood and Chindon rights of way within the proposed district are included, both of them?
They are included.
Both of them, okay.
Yeah, and we've learned over the years that, you know, dividing the right of way down the middle doesn't make any sense, and so if you're going to do an improvement, you need to do the whole thing.
Yeah.
And so we, we learned through experience that if you run that boundary out to the extreme side of the right of way, so that it's all included.
Great, thank you.
Okay, anything? Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I very much appreciate your presentation and the information that's been provided. I do have a question, and it's just trying to reconcile some of the information. So you're reporting that this is 360 parcels in a table, and I apologize, in the report, but in the council packet, it's page 48, the, the table references coverage. Is, is the number not a parcel number?
Um, what we did was look at the, the individual properties, and, because in the documentation from the assessor's office, they will give you what the size of the parcel is and what the size of the improvement is on that parcel. And what we tried to do was look at whether or not you have a significant amount of underdevelopment in the district. And so much, many of the parcels are only like 10% coverage of the, of the lot. Your development staff basically encourage much more dense development, certainly your plans call for much denser development, so you have vacancy that we counted and calculated. You have value, or you have the improvement value is less than the value, which is demonstrated as basically deteriorated parcel. And then we looked at, well, even in addition to that, are there parcels that basically you've got a large parcel with a tiny building on it, and is that basically something that's going to be ripe for development in the next 20 years? So the numbers don't add up, because some of them are kind of the same on top of each other, but we tried to look at this in a number of different ways to satisfy ourselves that there was opportunity for investment here that would generate the taxable income that the agency would need to fill, to build the improvements that's required.
Thank you very much for that explanation, I do appreciate it, yes.
Great, thanks. Anything else? We'll call you back if we need to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And Diane has joined us, welcome, great to see you. Council, the matter before us is a consideration of Resolution 1207-25. Any discussion, comments, or motions, always in order.
So the motion to approve, or to?
Yeah, to adopt Resolution 1207-25.
Mr. Mayor, moved that we moved to adopt Resolution 1207-25 for the establishment of an urban renewal agency on the south side of Chindon.
I would second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, the clerk call a roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thank you, you've got another unanimous vote to proceed, so thank you.
Thanks, Denny. Thank you.
Good to see you all.
See you everybody. Take care.
Yes.
Two brave soldiers are left.
Okay, next item on the agenda, item two, this is a third reading, ordinance 1050-24. Didn't have an opportunity to talk to Jenna and Charlie. Jenna, are you going to start us off?
Mayor, members of the council, I have a very, very brief staff report. My staff report takes the, this item on the agenda as well as the next, for what we've been discussing as the, the buffer ordinance. The first action that's suggested by staff tonight would be the third and final reading and to adopt and publish, Ordinance 1050-24, which is, which would establish the new RM zoning district. And then the second action that staff would suggest for to, for tonight, related to the buffers ordinance, would be the second reading, not the third, but the second reading of 1057-25, with the third reading being on the 23rd. I had spoken with a council member earlier and said that that would be a public hearing. I spoke incorrectly, I had in the back of my mind the PUD ordinance, so it would just be the third reading. And there have not been any changes to Ordinance 1050-24 since May 27th, so the last meeting. However, 1057-25, there were some comments by Mr. Bob Taunton regarding the river zone definition, and that's been updated. The definition of river zone just notes that, now notes that the designation of the river zone includes the, the floodway designation, or 25 feet, whichever is greater. And then on pages 153 and 154, the images that are embedded into code have been updated to make that a little bit more clear. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Questions of staff?
Thank you.
My turn, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, regarding Ordinance 1050-24, just want to say a couple things. First of all, I have a legal memo that's been updated, that's on pages 69 to 78 of your packet. The draft ordinance, 1050-24, for the residential, mixed residential, medium residential, excuse me, is pages 79 to 93. The draft decision that I'll spend most of my time talking about tonight is on pages 94 through 105. Regarding my legal memo, I just added a, a little bit to it, I didn't really add anything, nothing particularly noteworthy. Regarding the, going to the draft ordinance, I'll run through a couple of things just for the record. As we've gone through this process, Ms. Thornborough and I have met multiple times, her staff, Development Services, have been great, met with a bunch of different people, I think this is a clean ordinance. One of the things that I made sure is, in the title, for example, I made sure it's clear in the title that this is a designation specifically RM for medium residential density, so it's right in the title, it's clear for the newspaper and anybody else that wants to look it up. I added a couple whereas's on the ordinance that I think are consistent with what I've heard from mayor, council, and members of the public as we've gone through this process. And that's really, that's really all I have to say about the ordinance. I think the ordinance is clean, and it's ready to go for a third reading. Regarding the draft decision, I would like to spend just a minute on that. So going in order, there's going to be, I, I would assume there's going to be a motion for a third reading at some point in time, there's going to be a motion to approve this decision document, which is findings of fact, conclusions of law, and a decision, and then I would assume that there's going to be a motion to adopt and publish this evening. Regarding the decision, the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the decision, we have been very mindful of the interfaith case, staff has, Development Services have, and I certainly have, and I think mayor and council have. And so this decision document, I think, would withstand challenges under the interfaith case. A couple of things to highlight is, I did not really change anything in this draft decision at all, except for when you get to the conclusions of law, the conclusions of law start on page 100 of your packet. And what I did is I, I added a couple things in here, I would call it rationale, and this is the rationale that I heard from the, the council as we've gone through these three readings and your deliberations. I do have a couple changes that I would like to note on page 101. One change that I would propose is it says this is a development code amended initiated by the city, as members of the city council proposed it. I'm going to suggest that we just cut that sentence shorter to say this is a development code amendment initiated by the city. I don't, I don't think all the details are particularly relevant in this particular case. On page 101, I talk about how the council determined that there was a material change with this ordinance as we've gone through the process, and I, I explain what I heard to be the rationale, that the rationale for material changes, all the changes, all the different iterations that we've gone through from, from beginning to end. On page, again, 102, I talk about the comp plan. In my research, I was really happy to find that, yes, the comp plan's. In my research, I was really happy to find that, yes, the comp plan specifically talks about medium residential density. So this RM district is gonna be in alignment with the comprehensive plan, which is really the primary focus for these types of reviews. The comprehensive plan says specifically, and it's on page 66 of the comprehensive plan, that the Garden City designates areas north of Chindon and west of Glenwood for medium density residential. The plan specifies this designation allows for detached and attached dwelling units including duplexes and townhomes, end of quote. So I think what the council is doing is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and I thought that was important to put in the decision document. On page 103, I go through the analysis, and I think this is what I heard. If anybody has any corrections, I'd be happy to make them. And just so the council is aware, when I go through this analysis, what I did is I took all the rationale that was previously in the table, that you previously looked at and were fine with, and I just expanded on that. So I took the table rationale and I put it in the analysis, and I put in some things that I think I heard through this process. One thing that I should probably say is one thing we did not hear a lot about is, well, first of all, we heard a lot about the comprehensive plan. We heard a lot about how this is not gonna hurt health, safety, and welfare. I did not hear a lot of deliberation or discussion about impact on public services, which is one of the findings you have to make, that there's no negative impact on public services. And what I think I heard is that this district is gonna be compatible with the existing infrastructure. Infrastructure, in other words, that it is consistent with the current infrastructure and it's not detrimental on the public services as they exist. I think pretty much the rest of it pretty much speaks for itself. What I heard is that this approach, this RM approach helps retain the city's unique character while supporting diverse urban development. I think that's what I heard, so I put that in there for your review. On the last page, this is a little bit different than 1057-25, which I will be talking about in a minute. In this one, this is a straight-up legislative matter. So what's that mean? Is that you could talk to your constituents, you know, obviously, open meeting laws apply. But if somebody has, wants legal recourse, because it's legislative, this type of legislative, the recourse is not judicial review. They do not have to file a request for reconsideration. They would just go to court and submit a petition for declaratory judgment is what they would do. So there's due process, I just want the council to know they don't have to file a motion for reconsideration first. And why do I mention that? Because you'll notice on the decision, it doesn't say anything about filing a request for reconsideration, because it's not required in this context. Those are my talking points, I think. Again, to recap, I think that this is a very strong ordinance. It's legislative. I think the draft decision document is good. I am gonna propose, in addition to what I've already mentioned, some wording for your consideration. And if the council likes it, I'd like to add it. I think what I heard is the city council, and I suggest this wording somewhere, "The city council has heard its constituents west of Glenwood in countless letters, public carings, and neighborhood meetings. The resounding request is that their elected officials protect the nature and character of their established neighborhoods, and allow for record growth that they believe is changing the character of their neighborhoods. City council has heard from voters west of Glenwood and north of State Street. RM is one of the city council's responses to their requests." I think that's some additional rationale, and I'd be happy to repeat that.
Would you mind? Because I believe you said north of State Street?
I said west of Glenwood and north of State Street.
Yeah, it'd be north of Chindon.
North of Chindon, yeah.
Okay. Well, then that's, well, then I stand corrected. That wasn't my best subjecting, north, south, east, and west. Okay, so.
Most is gonna be surprised.
I don't want to have to field a call from Mayor McLean.
Or math, or math. I mean, I'm not gonna give you tax advice either. But yeah, I think that's some actual, just a summary of what the mayor and council have heard through this whole process from the public. I think that is about it. There are a couple typos that I'm gonna propose that be changed. One is after the packet went out, I saw it said comprehensive pan instead of comprehensive plan. That has been changed for the mayor's signature, but again, it's not a comprehensive pan. That was my fault, I apologize, but I caught it. And there were a couple minor typos that will be fixed, that I don't think the mayor and the council particularly care about. So that's my presentation, I stand for questions.
Questions of Mr. Wadums.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank staff for hearing our constituents, their wishes, and helping the council draft and put into actual words these cries from our voters to have their neighborhoods not impinged on to adhere to the comp plan. And as easy as that sounds, it requires exact wording. And I'm pleased with the decision document that I see here and appreciate the extra time that went into that document. So I just wanted to make a record of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would also like to second the president of the council's comments. I particularly appreciate the extent of public comment and guidance and contribution. I think that that speaks very well of our residents and constituents. Further, I also want to compliment our staff that spent a lot of time in ensuring the details. And I also want to thank Mr. Wadums because I particularly appreciated the effort in the decision statement and the reasoning. I thought that came together very nicely. And I also concur with president of the council that I like this product and I think it's done very, very well, and I'm very proud and grateful for the efforts.
Great, thank you. A motion is in order. If someone would not forget to include by title only, I would appreciate, Lisa would appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move for a third reading by title only of ordinance 1050-24. Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I want to ensure that we have, that we are in alignment on these codes. Will we be potentially subjected if we move forward with, sorry, I should reference the correct code number. If we move forward, will we potentially, since the second reading of 1057-25 is, would potentially be this evening, would we potentially have a gap or have two zones that would be in effect at the same time?
Mr. Mayor, may I answer that question?
Yes.
Thank you, and great keen observation. We have received some direction on a strategy for being able to adopt 1050-24 tonight, putting RM on the books, and then holding a third reading of 1057-25 until such time that we are prepared to actually begin assigning that designation to properties. And that will, because you're absolutely right, there was this risk of having sort of two coexisting, yeah, coexisting designations. So we don't want parallel universes.
Perfect, thank you.
Mayor, point of order just on that, I just want to make it clear that that was legal advice. That wasn't done in an open meeting or anything, that was legal advice from me to my council president. Thank you, just for the record.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Third reading, ordinance 1050-24, "An ordinance of the city of Garden City, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, am in Title 8 Development Code Chapter 2 based zoning district regulations hereby creating a new zone-based district designation RM for medium density residential density, repealing all ordinances or parts thereof to the extent they conflict with this ordinance, providing a severability clause approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date."
Thank you. Item, yes, item three would be a motion to adopt and publish ordinance 1050-24.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to adopt and publish 1050-24.
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion on the motion.
Mr. Mayor, president of the council, I believe that we want to adopt and publish as amended with recommended amendments per council.
Mayor, councilmember Jorgensen, I would recommend that that be the motion for the decision, that there were no changes to the ordinance except for the typos. I mean, there were the typos, no, I strike that. The typos were in the decision, not in the ordinance, so.
So, okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number four, approve CPA-FY 2024-0004 for ordinance 1050-24.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do move to approve CPA-FY 2024-0004 for ordinance 1050-24, along with findings of fact, conclusions of law, and amended decision. Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Go to item now G5. This is the second reading of ordinance 1057-25.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And I apologize for not putting that change to the agenda, but I would just briefly move to reopen deliberation on this before we go into a second reading.
Okay. Well, that's certainly fine with me.
I don't know if there's a second.
So I don't think that constitutes a material change to the agenda, so. So as we open up the discussion, I'll invite comments, council president.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I had hoped to have more community members in attendance today or to have the Zoom meeting open. Much of what I'm about to say is designed with that, that audience in mind. But for the council members, I just, I just really appreciated the, and the community involvement, the people that took this on and decided to be engaged in civic life and the community. It is a substantial revision to our zoning code. I want to acknowledge that the creation of district designation RM, not the creation of RM, but the designation does a couple things. While the positives or the things that we've heard from our community are to honor existing neighborhoods in conformance with the comprehensive plan, to have more uniformity with existing neighborhoods, there are some other changes which sound technical, but in practice are important to mention here. So under this plan, our use tables of R3 change. And I know everyone up here knows that. I hope the people in the community understand that. Absent any other involvement on their part, the use that could happen in their neighborhood if they don't adopt RM is, for example, there could be artist studios, limited service restaurants, healthcare, social services, daycares, laundromats, financial institutions, research labs, even small-scale manufacturing, in some cases, conditional uses. So what this could do is really change how a neighborhood feels. In a positive sense, the neighborhood might become more walkable. In a less positive sense, traffic might increase, right? For people, traffic trip count could go up to visit these businesses. I just, I want to be transparent, and I want to make sure that the community understands that we, as a council, are doing, are making these changes because we've heard the neighborhoods. We've heard, we've heard the people that came up, came out to council meeting to hear, to talk about pastry perfection, to talk about River Club changes, to talk about other applications that might be in the Boise Bible College. And I want those members of the community to know that they were heard and that this is because of them. However, to be fully transparent, this could change other aspects that they do not intend to be changed. And I just want to bring that up. Again, I wish, I wish there were more ears here to hear it, but thank you.
Thank you. Any, anything else prior to opening this up for a potential motion?
Would you like a legal report, Mr. Mayor?
Certainly.
Is that okay, council president? Okay. I just want to run through real quick, this is, that's okay? Are we in deliberations?
No, we're not, yeah, we haven't taken the item up yet. This is a pre-discussion before we take the item.
Would you like your legal report now or later, Mr. Mayor?
No, go ahead.
Okay, great. Okay, so regarding 1057-25, the legal memo's on page 106 to 111 of your packet. The draft ordinance is on page 112 to 164 of your packet, and then the draft decision is on page 165 to 177 of your packet. Looking at the staff report, there's nothing really noteworthy. It's basically the same staff report that you've had in front of you before. The one difference, though, is I specifically call out in my legal memorandum, starting on page 110 over to, oh, excuse me, I should say 109, I'm sorry, 110 to 111, talks about, basically, this is a rezone of R3. I mean, when you change 26 different uses and you make 26 uses either permitted or conditional, it's a rezone of R3. And so I make it very clear in my memorandum that this is a rezone of R3. I also make it very clear in the decision document and the draft ordinance. So looking just briefly at the draft ordinance, I want to point out that on the title, I specifically say in the middle of the title, this is amending the current zone base, the current zone-based district designation R3 to be mixed-use residential. And so what this would do is it changes it from medium density, which is now the RM, and it switches it over to mixed-use residential. So I make sure that's in the title so we don't have any issues with the title of the ordinance. I did go through these tables, starting on page 118 to 125. I counted up 26 changes to R3, so that is in the ordinance. And then if you look at the summary of the ordinance on page 163, I want to be completely transparent from the legal side of the house, and from all sides of the house, but in the summary, I say that, again, that this, because RM zoning designation in 1050 has now happened, this ordinance 1057-25 shifts the R3 district designation to being mixed-use residential. And so that's very transparent in your draft ordinance. On your draft decision document, again, everything's in there that we've discussed. I did add the rationale, the conclusions of law. I specify on page 172 of the draft decision that actually this is nine different code amendments within Title 8. And so it summarizes that in the decision document. Talks about how the council determined there was a material change in the rationale, just similar to 1050-24. On page 173 in the draft decision, I heard testimony and I heard deliberation about environmental protection. That's one of the goals in our comprehensive plan. And specifically, our comprehensive plan specifically says that, and protection of the river is right in the comp plan, so I cite the protection of the river, I cite the goal for that. And I really thought that was pretty visionary, when the council adopted that comp plan for them to be talking about, you know, the Boise River. So I included that, included the rationale behind the Boise River District. The reference on the comprehensive plan regarding focus on the rivers on page 174 of your packet, and it says that the objective is to plant-maintain appropriate landscaping materials along the river based on hazardous conditions and riparian health, allow for limited pruning, vegetation, cleanup of riverbanks. But this right here, I thought was really visionary. Protect. Protect native plants and trees and prohibit any activity that would destabilize the riverbank. And I think that is exactly what the goal of this new district is. I have a quote in here from Councilmember Bill Jacobs that I liked, and I'm just going to credit Councilmember Bill Jacobs. And it says, and it's on page 176 of the packet, "The goal is to get the municipal code to match the comprehensive plan as much as possible, because the comprehensive plan was developed by a committee to help determine the vision for the city." I think I got that quote pretty close, and I liked it, so I put it in there.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yes, sir. The one thing I would say on this decision document, whenever the council gets around to it, whether, it's not going to be tonight, I don't think, but I think we need to specify that the rezone of R3 is subject to request for reconsideration, is subject for judicial review. So everybody knows that under due process, if they have an issue with that, that's the process. Request for reconsideration under LUPA would be a judicial review. And so whenever the time is right, I'm going to recommend that change to the decision. With that, I stand for questions. Thank you.
Questions? Okay. With that, the matter now before us is the second reading of ordinance 1057-25.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move for that second reading by title only of ordinance 1056-25.
1057.
1057. I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. Hey.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the second reading of ordinance 1057-25 by title only. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. The clerk call a roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Second reading, ordinance 1057-25, an ordinance of the city of Garden City, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, establishing new citywide land use regulations regarding buffer zones, frontage setbacks, activity nodes, outdoor lighting, landscaping, mix of land uses, fencing, Boise River natural resource protection, and definitions by repealing Title VIII Development Code, Chapter 2, Base Zoning District Regulations, Article H, flood hazard, Section 6, riparian zone, amending Title VIII Development Code, Chapter 2, Base Zoning District Regulations, Article H, general conditions, through Article C, Section 27, laundromat self-service cleaning, amending the current zone-based district designation, R3, to be mixed-use residential district, amending Chapter 4 Design and Development Regulations, Article A, general provisions, through Article I, landscaping and tree protection provisions, Section 5, perimeter landscaping provisions, amending Chapter 7, references, Article A, definitions, Section 2, definitions of terms, adding Title VIII, Chapter 2, Article B, Section 4, mix of uses, adding Chapter 4, Article M, Boise River Natural Resource, repealing all other ordinances or part thereof to the extent they conflict with this ordinance, providing for a severability clause approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Item G6, this is also a second reading for ordinance 1056-25. It's our planned unit development code. Ms. Thornborough.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you and hello once again. I have an extremely brief presentation on ordinance 1056-25, the Planned Unit Development, or PUD, ordinance. During the May 27, 2025 hearing on this matter, we did hear concern that, about having blank walls adjacent to residential structures in the residential zoning districts. Staff wanted to bring to your attention that at some level, perhaps, that's already addressed through 84I5B, which requires a Type A visual landscape separator between the uses in those districts. However, on page 178 of your staff report, staff has suggested, if you wanted to take that, some language, if you want to take that a little bit further for the third reading of the ordinance, or postpone the second reading, I guess, would be another option. And that is in Section 84C3A7. Currently, there's a provision that says no blank walls shall front a public street. And there's the potential that you could add, or in existing single-family dwelling in R1, R2, or RM zoning districts. And then it gives a couple of ways that you could treat those blank walls. And then additionally, in a new number 16 in 84B6, multi-family dwelling units and mixed-use developments. So not just non-residential, but those mixed-use and multi-family could have the exact same wording placed twice in code. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Questions?
Thank you.
Reaction to the, to the change, potential change there?
I personally like that change. So when you say, now, Michael, so you put a window there, or something, right?
Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, that's correct. It's just the blank walls would require landscaping, which is already required. So perhaps if somebody wasn't proposing landscaping where there was that blank wall, it would further push that point, where they would have to put some sort of artwork, window, do something. Thank you.
Okay, you saw some smiles. They're good. Okay.
But staff would request in your, in your motion, if you want to include that for the next reading, if you move forward and have a reading tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Wadums, you have anything to say about this one?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, not really. I'll have an updated draft decision for the third reading on the 23rd. I did not include that in the packet tonight, because it's just the second reading. So I'll have a nice draft decision for you for the third reading. Thank you.
As the council considers the second reading on ordinance 1056-25, please indicate whether for the third reading you'd like the language transcribed that Ms. Thornborough just expressed included. Or not. If you don't ask that it's included, it will not be included.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is that a call for a motion?
Yes.
I move for a second reading of ordinance 1056-25 by title only, and that further readings include draft language proposed by our Director of Development Services. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. The clerk call a roll, please.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Second reading, ordinance 1056-25, an ordinance of the city of Garden City, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, repealing the existing planned unit development and minor planned unit development code, Garden City Code, Title VIII Development Code, Chapter 6 Administration, Article B, specific provisions, Section 7, planned unit development, Section 8, minor planned unit developments, and adopting a new comprehensive planned unit development code, Section 7, planned unit developments, and amending standards for property maintenance, non-residential residential dwelling units, amenities, mixed-use, open space subdivision, design standards and provisions, and definitions, Chapter 1, general regulations, Article C, property maintenance provisions, Section 3, property maintenance and standards, through Chapter 7, references, Article A, definitions, Section 7, definition of terms, repealing conflicting city code provisions, approving a summary of the ordinance, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. That concludes the business on our agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I rug pull you twice now.
That's all right.
I would request a comment on new business. This is item I, if I may have a moment.
Certainly.
Thank you. Pursuant to privileged legal advice that I have received, I would like to take a minute to direct staff, now that RM designation is in the books, to begin the process of defining medium density designation in accordance with the comp plan, so that we may act in a way that is expedient when the time comes. And I'd like to hear from other members of the council if you disagree with that, with that direction.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So I wholeheartedly agree, you know, that we, now that we have the new RM designation, kind of to Charlie's point, and my quote, is we want to follow that comp plan. And there are certain neighborhoods in the city, one is Willow Creek, we've heard from them, and we've heard other neighborhoods like Plantation, things like that, that really those residents would like to have an RM designation for where they live. Now, it's not the whole city, obviously, but it's, there's certain neighborhoods that I think clearly would benefit from being rezoned to RM and benefit from the new language of our new ordinances. So I think having the staff look at the comprehensive plan and look at what neighborhoods should be designated as that is the right thing to do, and then advise council so that we can potentially have, go ahead and rezone those areas. And then, and then I think, per the earlier conversation, then we can look at that 1057-25 and look at that afterwards, so that we don't have a gap.
Okay. Well, I think that's easy to do. We can do that administratively. I don't need to vote on it, really, unless you prefer to have a vote on the record. What I'll be visiting with staff about is two things. One, identifying the current R3 parcels north of Chindon, west of Glenwood. And then, number two, looking at certain neighborhoods on how they're currently developed and what zone would fit their current development. Some of it may be RM, some of them may be R2. That's a discussion we can have at a hearing or some other mechanism to get some input from the public. So, happy to get that going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. I think that was the intent all along. So, thank you for bringing that up. Okay. With that, I now would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.